Chris, good presentation.
I am.
I am.
Also, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of December 1st, 2021. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Troop Six, which you can see all of them in front of us, which is the Assistant Scout Masters, Sean Riccio, Ken Machado, and more important gentlemen are the scouts themselves, Finn Riccio, Andrew Machado, Wilson Menazies, and Logan Sonenfield. I hope I said that right. And why don't you guys come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
All right.
Everyone could rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, take just a moment, spin around. So everyone can see you. This will not be your last time on TV, right? Thank you, gentlemen. They're joining us this evening for civic involvement. It's also specifically for the citizenship in the community merit badge. Again, welcome and thank you for doing that for us. Adam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve the consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. We have the town council meeting of November 10, 2021, and the executive session meeting of October 20, 2021.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is public hearing, and we have public, I'm sorry, Brian Dwygans of Borealis Coffee Company, LLC, 500 Witch Street, Unit 113. And this is a request for a Class B limited liquor license.
As the clerk just pointed out, this is the public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? If you could come up to the podium. And when you come up, if you could state your name, your full name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Brian Dwygans, 144 Whipple Road, Smithfield. Thank you. I'm the owner of, along with my wife Jessie, Borealis Coffee. We've been operating our existing cafe in Riverside Square for about just over five years, and we're sort of in the process of moving into Unity Park over at 500 Wood Street, which is, there's the brewery just opened, the brick restaurant is about to get ready to open, so there's a lot of life is starting to pop up there. We are very excited about being part of that community, and we just think that the adding the beer and wine is really going to add to the overall value of our establishment is part of the greater good of the community in Unity Park, and just really excited about being part of the community in Bristol. And we've had a lot of interest from our existing customers and other people that have found us from Bristol and traveled to Riverside that are very excited about not having to cross the bridges in Barrington to get to us anymore. So I'm very excited about my coming to Bristol.
Great.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Why don't we get a motion, if this council is amenable, to move C1 and D1 forward? It seems appropriate to keep everything under the same discussion point.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to move C1 and D1 forward. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we'll start with C1.
So C1 is ordinance 2021-20. This is for Chapter 17, and this is to increase the number of Class B limited licenses from five to six, and it's the second reading for adoption.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves. Are any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then moving to D1, we have Brian Dwygans for Borealis Coffee Company LLC, and this is the request for the Class BB limited liquor license.
He sent all the positive recommendations to make a motion to approve, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations and good luck.
Congratulations. Excellent, welcome.
Good luck.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, may I also just point out D2 for the vitroling license?
Can we have a motion to move that forward also, please?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim to move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And that would be Brian Dwygans for Borealis Coffee, and this is the request for the vitroling license.
Make a motion to approve the vitroling license.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to approve. Just take a moment. Brian, did you want to come up, have a 30-second commercial on what you're planning to do over there?
Yeah.
No would have been a bad answer, right? No thanks, I don't want to tell anybody.
Yeah, so we started as a coffee roaster. I started as a side hustle from my, worked my full-time job just roasting coffee. And when we had the opportunity to open the cafe in Riverside, we kind of were forced to evolve from just selling coffee to, you know, simple baked goods and things like that. And I learned very quickly that if everybody was, had basically one stop on their way to work, they could either get coffee or coffee and breakfast. They would usually almost always choose a place that had something other than coffee. So we've sort of been slowly evolving out of this, like, kind of stuck pattern of just coffee to slowly add more and more items. And in May, in Riverside, we just started adding sandwiches and some other things like that. And Bristol is going to prove it's four times the size. We have a full-size kitchen. We have a nine-foot hood that is hopefully going to be getting installed in the next month or so. So it's going to be a very full kitchen and with pastry programs. So I eventually want to start adding not just like the muffins and scones that we've been doing, but also like soup salads, like a much larger sort of cafe restaurant with really, really good coffee, and then, you know, craft beer and wine as well. So that's the goal.
And Brian, just curious, when do you expect to have the doors open?
It seems to be, like, it seems to add, like, add two weeks for every week that goes by. But at this point, I think it's looking pretty good for February.
Great, great.
So like, as long as we're open in time for, you know, the spring, when the weather starts getting nice, that's really my main concern, so.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck.
Good luck.
So we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is also public hearing B2, and this is David Carney, 5 Clifton Road, and this is a request for a license to maintain town property, continued from November 10.
So this is also a public hearing, so I'm going to open it to the public. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? If you could state your full name and address for the record.
David Carney, and it's 5 Clifton Road.
Welcome.
Just to give you a little bit of background, our house was built in 1984. According to town records, sometime around 1987, the wall that separated our property from the cemetery was cleared probably by the former homeowner. We moved in, well, my parents took title in 2004. And then we moved there with my kids and built a... 94, excuse me. So my parents, my parents had come in in around 2004, around, and then we had done an in-law setup. So we've been there ever since. Since 1987, our shed has sat on a piece of land that, you know, we quietly enjoyed and abutted the cemetery. About six years ago, the town came through and put a water main that runs out now to Papa Squash that continued the end of Clifton Road, turned through, went across cemetery property, and then eventually goes out and connects up with Papa Squash. So this little triangular piece of land, you know, we're not... I'm not sure what the usability would be at this point. The piece of land we're talking about is sandwiched in between a water main that runs down right alongside of our property line. On the other side of the piece of land, outside of the piece that we're looking at, is this sewer main. So it's kind of left this little corner unusable. I received a letter several months ago that the town had said either, we neither, either need to petition for use of that land or move off of it. What we're interested in doing is petitioning for use. In my initial numbers, and I'm not sure if you received the map that I had supplied, I just left the shed where it was, which rendered a 3,600 square foot piece of property. We don't need all that. I really don't have, it's really an awkward lot line, and all I'm looking to do is be able to keep my shed. So if that meant move the shed right up to the property line, you know, that's something that we would consider and be happy with. I, you know, I recognize, you know, that there's a lot. The town doesn't want to give up land. We had gone and met with the Cemetery Commission. They were amendable to letting us stay there, provided, you know, provided that we were granted license, you know, on an agreement that once they need the land, we would get off. We're certainly amendable to, if granted, care of that land. You know, we would ensure it to indemnify the town from any liability, and also, you know, be happy to pay taxes on that portion for as long as we had it. And I think that's everything I have.
Questions from the council?
The shed is eight feet by 10 feet. So maybe three feet around that. You know, if we brought it right up to the property line.
So let me piggyback on Mary's question.
Sure.
What was initially proposed to us?
So initially, where the shed fits, and I'm not sure if you have the...
This is primarily what we're looking at.
Yeah, so the shed, the shed sits maybe 30, 20 feet in from where our actual property line is right now. And we'd be glad to move it closer. When I initially proposed this, I went from Clifton Road down to the back of the cemetery property, because the shed really sits right on the edge of where the bike path is. I left 10 feet behind that for setback, and then mapped out the land that way. So that puts, that gives us a much bigger slice. Most of this lot is wooded area. We're not looking, we're not going to clear any additional land or anything. It's just the way it worked out to be, you know, a perfect triangle if I cut straight from Clifton Road down to the back of the property.
And this map, it says 3,730 feet.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So you're saying that you need considerably less than that.
Well, we can take less than that. What my initial hope, and I'm realizing that it's, that my initial hope is probably not going to happen. My initial hope was to be able to not have to move my shed if nobody's, you know, if that land's sitting there unused. I'm perfectly fine, you know, if we have to move the shed, I'm just in a position where I have no place to move that shed onto my land at this point.
Okay, I just don't understand, I mean, I basically, you know, support this idea at some level. I'm just trying to figure out, like, you said most of this is wooded, right? So, I mean, even if you have, oh, I think on this other color one, I can see the shed. I mean, so is, even if you left the shed where it is, that's just taking...
If I were to leave the shed where it is, and you look at the triangle, the cemetery side of that triangle runs through woods. I had just simply drawn a line straight from Clifton Road down. So if we said, you know, no, we'll give you enough room to keep your shed where it is, and we'll just do a little bump out that's rectangular, I'm totally amendable to that.
So this is a public hearing, so these questions are absolutely appropriate, but I want to stay away from any kind of approving or not approving, not on your end or our end. So I want to make sure that if there's anyone else speaking in favor or against, that they feel comfortable coming up. I don't want them to get a feeling that the council's going one direction or another. So is there any other questions for Mr. Carney at the moment for clarity? And I think we're probably going to ask him to come back up again, once we close the public hearing.
So, Mr. Chairman, there'll be an opportunity to ask questions of the solicitor after.
After we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
That way we can allow for comfortable dialogue, if you will. So is there any other questions for Mr. Carney at the moment? That's it, all right. We're good at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
I'm Charlie Calvacanti. I'm chairman of the Cemetery Commission.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you state your full address for the record?
Oh, yeah, ADH Church Street.
Thank you.
Um, there's a very... The cemetery is celebrating 200 years come April, so it's an old piece of property. And what we have inherited, I think everyone in this room, is this situation, and not only this one. The, I'm all in favor of the town retaining the property. However, as a result of two water pipes, one, a 12-inch water main that was introduced to the property unbeknownst to us in about 2013, that cuts across the northwest corner of North Burial Ground. And then there is a storm drain, excuse me, from Clifton Road that goes, there's a manhole cover right at the end of Clifton Road that goes east, goes west to the bike path. Those two pipes are on the cemetery property, virtually rendering the cemetery property useless for its purpose. We cannot bury anyone on a pipe, very simply. So, I mean, the Carney situation came to our awareness. We were looking to explore the use of the five acres, or it's like 4.9 acres, on the west side of North Burial Ground, basically the property behind the community center. And we were, it's sort of a casual observation, and we were able to find the southwest corner, which is a railroad marker, which is a gold standard, as a result of being in relationship to the East Bay, the history of the East Bay bike path. I was never able to find, nor was anyone able to point in a direction where were the northwest corners. So we had a map from the 1990s or so of a potential road that went through that back four and a half acres. And we said, well, let's see what we have. The university students had cleaned out the inorganic material about five years ago. So we had some, you know, brush and trees and things like that, and cleaned up the place. And we discovered over the summertime, the northwest corner was bright on the Carney's patio, for that matter. And we were all pretty surprised about how much of the property was. I mean, I thought the property line was between the pipes and their shed and something like that. So with all that said, the conversation that we had at our meeting the other night was for licensing so that we would know what's going on at the property, number one. Number two, the property is useless to us as a cemetery. We cannot bury anyone near the pipe, and granted, it would be a number of years down the line. The history or the lifespan of a water main is probably, what, 100 years, 150 years? So we can wait as far as a cemetery is concerned. But nevertheless, it creates challenges for, you know... I personally initially brought this up to Julie, the treasurer, as a result of insurance liability exposure, because who knew that the northwest corner was basically their backyard? So I'm in favor of licensing as to hold on and to be aware of what's going on with that property. I know there are other issues going on as far as town properties are concerned, but it is our property. It's really clear. It's the cemetery, and we know it is ours, and we're not giving it away. We're not selling it. We're making sure that it stays within the family, and we know what's going on with it. So I don't know how the solicitor would address, certainly liability issues, insurance issues, and indemnification and all that, but I'm sure that there's a formula that can be created for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, council?
Mr. Chairman, I just, on this subject, I just had a question for the solicitor, Mike, when you're ready. Mike, I just wanted to wonder if you could dive into a sale of this property and how this would work, number one. Number two, if there was be a precedent being set here where if we did this, could this expose us to many more property owners as well? I don't know what that list is, first off, so I'm just trying to understand the wide scope before we get into, because we're looking at a very, you know, microscope, but in the council here, we have to think about the whole town.
Sure, so let's start with your second question.
Okay.
And when you adopted, when the Bristol Town Council adopted the licensing procedure policy, the idea was to address small issues that occurred, like, outside of sidewalks, around driveways. It was really designed to deal with the liability issues, which got brought up here tonight, too, in terms of someone being able to actually be on town property. This is, as I put in my memo, this is the first case in which a relatively large piece of property that's owned by the town or the public was brought to your attention. I did hear tonight that there's a suggestion to dramatically reduce that large piece to the size of the shed and maybe a foot or two all around it, but that's a different issue, too. I do think that this policy, which was adopted actually in 2010, that for you to grant a license on a piece this large, you would be very hard-pressed if future property owners who were in the same situation came before you and asked for the same type of relief. I have a big concern about that the licensing policy wasn't really drafted to address that type of size of property. So now, do you have the authority, the licensing policy doesn't have a number on it. I'm just telling you what the spirit is in terms of square feet for small little items. And all the ones you've permitted up to now, licenses you've granted, do involve small pieces, relatively small pieces. I think you asked me about the sale, if it...
Yeah, I was curious and likes the sale of a property. So say, say we did hypothetically, say we did go forward, and now we have this one, and then eight other residents come forward, right? They want to do this as well, we've kind of set a precedent on this. I'm just thinking about how we're going to track it, how we're going to monitor it. The house sells, goes to another owner, liability insurance. I'm just trying to understand how this would all work where the town is still protected.
Your licenses are normally for, it's an annual license, so you would, I would, I would actually advise you, if you're going to go forward with this, to actually place in the motion that on an annual basis has to come back to reapply. That's really the best way for the council, the clerk's office, to keep track of these licenses so they don't disappear. I'm not sure we've done that in the past, because, again, we're talking about de minimis pieces of property, really inconsequential, small pieces of property. But we could address that with having the applicant or the property owner come back to you on an annual basis.
Okay, and then on the liability insurance piece?
Liability, what we would require is a certificate from the owner's homeowner's insurance policy that would name the town of Bristol as an additional insured.
Thank you.
So I'm inclined to support like a narrowly kind of tailored version of this, like the one that was discussed by the petitioner. But one of my questions for you, Mr. Solicitor, is how many potential, and maybe you're not the one to answer this question, but how many potential pieces of large property like this are there out there?
So, I, you're right, I just don't know.
I don't think that's a way to answer it, quite honestly, because you think of all the homeowners whose properties are but town land, probably, I mean, off the top of my head, there's got to be hundreds, right? But, I mean, how many situations are we talking about, like, that would be similar to this? It's a great question. I don't think anybody can answer that, but, right? I mean, am I missing something on this? I think if they're, Diane, feel free to weigh in.
Well, I was just going to answer the same way you did, that, you know, we really don't know what we don't know until we survey it. And we are, as I mentioned in my memo, we are in the process of commissioning a survey on another area of town where we might have some encroachments, and I don't know how many or how large. But when we looked at this, we thought of that property and realizing that we, you know, we could potentially be looking at a lot of similar situations in that neighborhood, and then as well as any others that come to light. So that's why I think it was my recommendation that you not go forward with this, because I didn't want to see this snowballing with many other property owners coming forward to get a license to maintain. And I think what the solicitor described was my recollection of the license more of, you know, almost more of a landscaping license to maintain. I don't specifically recall, you know, areas where there were physical buildings or structures. So, again, I think, you know, to his point, it was not, I don't think there was a vision that this is where we would be going with the license to maintain necessarily, so.
Didn't we just pass one for ramp?
We did.
Stairs?
Yeah, Bain Street.
Just recently, like a few months ago.
Barnum, if my memory is correct, was the...
It wasn't Bain Street, somewhere else.
Right.
Yeah. If I can make a suggestion, I mean, it seems to me that if the property is partly wooded, so you don't want to maintain the wooded property, and you have an eight-by-10 or whatever you said shed. I don't want to put you off, but I know, we're not going to throw you off in the middle of winter or anything like that. Maybe that we should just put this off to the next meeting or to the first meeting in January, and maybe the town, some of the people from the building department could go out there and work with Mr. Carney and figure out, like, what do they really need? I mean, if they're asking for like 3,000 right now, but it really comes down to 500 square feet or whatever, you know, that makes a big difference. And we're talking about in hypothetical, and we don't know really what it would look like. Like, it would look like this if he moves his shed, but if he doesn't, maybe it comes out, goes down, and maybe makes like a small pie slice or a triangle, like another triangle within that triangle. From what I'm looking at the map, it just seems to me that that would be a better way to approach this than to discuss hypotheticals now, because we, and even if we said, yes, we'll give you 1,000 square feet, we don't even know what that, if that's enough, I mean, you know, and we don't exactly know. So we really don't know what we're talking about, in it, since he's able to go, you know, willing to go to a smaller piece of land. And I think we have given licenses to maintain for smaller pieces of land beyond landscaping, you know. So I don't, I think the interesting thing was, I think some of it was the timing, because Diane's letter... Because Diane's letter. Made a reference to the, the need of the cemetery commission to use it at for its intended purpose. And then I think they met the same day that you may have written that letter. And they said, we don't really need it because we can't do anything with this property to, it's kind of useless to us at this moment. And the license to maintain is not selling, it's not giving it away, it's letting them use it. And I would, I would imagine when that license to maintain goes somewhere on the deeds too. I mean, when somebody asked the question about it, the house was sold or whatever, like, does it ever get like that?
I don't know if they get recorded specifically. Do they get recorded, Melissa? Yeah. Okay. So they, they do get recorded.
Melissa's saying they get recorded.
Tony?
No, I, that was my question, just to be sure that there's some record there. So if they opt to sell the property, it's like, okay. Hey, the shed is there, everything is okay. And if it's not disclosed at the sale or by the realtor. Or the owners at that time, then it's, you know, when we've had some situations, we won't avoid that.
I guess like one of the other questions I have, Mr. Chairman, is. On the licenses to maintain, there's a lot of them out there, right? So we're.
Actually, yeah, I don't think, I don't think there are. I think a handful.
Okay, just a handful. Okay. So one of the reasons why I was asking was. That I, it could get unwieldy if, you know, people are coming up here once a year on these licenses to maintain and. I mean, if we did it in the same way that we do some of the licenses for alcohol and things like that where it's on this big list.
Right.
Then it's probably a little bit less unwieldy, but. That's just one of the things I thought about is like, if there's the explosion of these types of things, now all of a sudden. Everybody's bogged down with the hearings on it, you know?
Right. So we need to understand the full scope of the process and what, what we are exposed to overall. So I'd be in favor of a continuous. To continue with like Mary had said.
Should I make a motion to that, Mr. Chairman, for that effect?
Yeah, we're going to have discussion, but absolutely. I think it's a great point. So that was Mary's motion. Is there a second?
If that's, yeah, that was my motion. Okay.
And that would be to the, the next meeting. So discussion?
The next meeting, if it can get done, if not the first meeting in January, the next meeting is on the twenty second.
Twenty second is our next meeting, yes. So you would prefer to continue to?
If, if, if it can get done, if, you know, the, I mean, I don't want to.
How about our first meeting in January?
Okay, yeah. To have to like spend the money and get somebody, I mean, our town should be able to figure that out.
So the motion amended was to continue this to our January meeting, seconded by Tim.
Second, correct.
So discussion. So for myself, I would not in any way vote to approve. Giving up town land and with respect to the cemetery commission chairman. I, it doesn't matter to me, the use, because it belongs to everyone. I do, and, and I must tell you something. I walked into this meeting after having discussions with the solicitor saying, you know. If we were talking about giving a small piece because, and I gave that example actually of Varnum, I believe it was Varnum. Where the house abutted town property by a couple of feet. That to me is exactly, to use your term, the spirit of what a license to maintain. It's not to maintain the property, it's so you can use the property. So I absolutely take zero offense that you ask to do this. I take, for me personally, I think that. Is, is fair that you asked the question, but at the end of the day, this belongs to everybody. So. If you came back to this council after working with appropriate people, I would say Diane Williamson and others. I would consider that and I would ask that the least amount of town land, whether it was two feet. And I would need that us as a town to say, we made all efforts to use the least amount possible and then propose that. To the council. So for example, you have an eight by ten shed that is it four feet on directly in your property and four feet on town property? Somehow that I can, that becomes a much more doable process. But I would need to be convinced that there was no other possibility of using what is your land on it. So again, I, I. I think this is a fair request and, but at the end of the day. We spend as a council in a town, millions of dollars for open space, regardless of its usage. It belongs to all of us. You're not asking to keep it for you. You've just, you've got a shed there and you're looking for a solution and this council understands that. So. But I think, I think continuing and having a different proposal right now, this proposal, I could not vote for. And a different proposal with very little land used, public land used, it would be something I would consider. Mr. Administrator, you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up some things that the council may not have considered. You know, you're going to have our team go out and try to work with the family and, and the family has all good intentions. They purchased the property. But we have to face other neighbors. This is a half mile strip of linear property in line with a historic stone wall. With dozens of neighbors who have followed the rules for many decades since that plat was built in the nineteen forties, they stayed on their side of the wall. Some, at some time, somebody took a historic wall down and encroached on, on North Burial Ground property. So I think we can't forget that because when we're facing these other issues that are going to be coming up with encroachments on town land. We're going to go back to this case. And then I have to remind you, we had a similar case on the East Bay bike path. Where we lobbied to DOT not to lease property for a shed on state property, not very far from this site. So now we're going to reverse positions and we're going to say it's okay to use public land for private purposes. So. I think it sends a very terrible message in the future and I don't think it's the right thing for those other neighbors which have kind of, could have done a very similar thing and they never did. And this is no reflection on the current family. It wasn't them. But somebody did something wrong years ago and the other, and it, and it's, it just seems very unfair. And for us to be firm with other residents now that bought our open space, it, it, our words are going to be hollow and it, and it's. It's unfair for us to have to make this arrangement. The shed needs to move off the town property. And only the town council can convey land, not the North Burial Ground Commission. There's other uses for that property. If the cemetery commission would like to turn it over to the recreation department nearby, we could find use for it. It's habitat. It's, it's, it's.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Recreation is not.
Mr. Administrator, just one moment. There was silence for everyone. Not giving the same respect is unacceptable. So please allow the dialogue to continue. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. Again, recreation is, takes many forms and that's open space, that's passive recreation. That's, again, I say it, we've been, we've been purchasing as much property as we can for habitat, for animals, wildlife, trees, shrubs. We're not interested in that area of expanding the plat into town property. So. I know I'm not the only one that feels this way. It's our duty to preserve our town property. I just hope that the council considers that. Before they ask the administration to make an agreement or propose an agreement. Thank you.
Counsel?
Well, I, I have to weigh in because I pretty much felt like you at the beginning. You know, with the amount that was being asked, but after hearing the town administrator, it certainly raises a whole different level of concern to me. So I would propose that. I know we already asked to move this to another meeting, but at this point in time, I would support what the administrator just said.
But I think, I think we don't really know how much land we're, we're looking at. I mean, I mean, maybe my math is off, but isn't eight by ten eighty square feet? Is that right?
So we're talking about maybe a hundred square feet somewhere on that property. Even if it was backed up to your house side of that, you know, as opposed to without like wall is, I mean. I think we have to give them an opportunity to come back and see what we're asking for. I mean, you know, a hundred square feet, a hundred twenty five square feet is, and I don't even, I'm just making that up. So I'm far from an engineer or anything like an expert on that. Is a long shot from thirty seven fifty, you know, thirty seven thirty, that's. You know, so there's lots downtown Bristol, probably my house, that is barely, you know, four thousand square feet. So. I don't, if it's wooded, I mean, I don't, I don't think you, you'd want to maintain that anyway. You know, so and be liable for trees that come down or whatever else the case may be. So. I think it's the fairest thing to do is, I mean, we've given, we've given small amounts of property to, for me, license to maintain. We're not giving the property to these people. We're giving them a license to maintain that piece of property for use. If the town needs it back, then we have the opportunity to get it back. So I don't really. See, I think we need to know what we're talking about. Like people's reaction is to this thirty seven hundred square feet, but it's. It may not be anywhere near that.
I think Tim captured it and then the administrator reiterated it. It's not just this property. It's what this decision then. Or what it affects. It sets precedent. And the precedent is that if there's justification here, there's also going to be justification in other ways. And whether it's a, whatever the size is, I won't get into the particulars, is that belongs to everyone. And when someone has, whether it's a shed or it's a garage or. In one that we did recently was the seven feet of town land approximately. Of a, of, that is unused by everyone except that resident and that's not the intention of public land. So I think. I think it was captured well that this is not just letting someone use town property. This has much larger. Effect. So, but I, we have a motion in a second to move this forward. I for myself, as I said, I'll say it again, I would need clear justification that there was no other possibility, the least amount of town land. If at all, maybe, maybe there's a solution found that doesn't need any and that would be outstanding. But I'm happy to listen to it. It is a far cry from what is in front of us. So. So we have a motion in a second to move it to our first meeting in January. Madam Clerk, when is that meeting, please?
January nineteenth.
January nineteenth. Okay. Is there any other discussion from the council?
Can I just ask that, one other thing that maybe we could be helpful for this is to provide a list of the properties that we have, the licenses to maintain. And how much land it is. I mean.
Outstanding idea.
If somebody's coming with like two feet over, but ten feet long, that's not just two feet, right? That's. You know, twenty square feet. So we should just have an idea of what that may be because I feel like that. Over time, there are more than we're thinking there may be out there.
It's a great idea.
Question, that license to maintain that list, are you looking for the past twenty years? Are you looking?
Well, it was adopted in two thousand and ten, so past eleven years.
Because then we have something else before that though. I mean, what happened to the people that, did everybody move to this license?
The council, I, I have my memo from November of two thousand and ten. The council adopted this policy to address issues such as this that would come up from time to time, but. To my knowledge, and I've been here since ninety five, honor and a privilege, there has, there was no policy in effect.
There's no policy, but there were people that were maintaining or using.
Probably.
Like paper streets and things like that. So did they all convert over to this or? Does that still exist, you know?
I doubt, I'm sure that's not the case. Is you can't adversely possess against the town. So whenever the town finds a situation like this. We have every right to ask the property owner to get, get off town land, but you can't adversely possess.
But in reading Diane's memo, I think that's what she's attempting to do is to identify exactly. Any of these areas that may have been, not necessarily in violation, but have used over time, town land without permission. Am I correct?
Correct, correct. So there's two recreation areas in town that we are going to be looking at. One, one in particular, we're moving forward with some survey work and. We believe that there is a lot of encroachment into that open space. And as the town administrator said, some of these properties, they're not really actively used necessarily, but there's still town properties that we don't want encroachments on. So. That's, that's the, that's the concern that I have, that we may identify in our other project, many more multiple encroachments and.
And how do you say yes to one and no to another?
Right. And, and to the point of the previous one that you did, which I think was on Vernon. That was, you know. A, a house that was built, you know, many, 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 many years ago. And they needed a ramp to access the house, you know, from, from the, from the right of way. So it wasn't, it wasn't even similar in, in the type of permission that they were asking for, but. I, I am just concerned about being in this position. In the not too distant future with multiple other property owners saying, you know, look, we didn't know we were encroaching or. Somebody took down the fence or the wall or what have you, and now we're on town land and. It, it's a concern. And I know that the Carneys didn't do the, you know, they didn't create the encroachment. They had the benefit of it for a, a long time. So. I, I realize it wasn't them, but I do, I do have concerns about what, as I said before, what we don't know. And what position we might be in as a result of granting this license.
And Diane, I think you nailed it for me. I mean, Mike, I'm really nervous about the, A, the exposure for the whole town. How, what the process is going to be to be tracking this again. And again, opening us up to any liability lawsuits down the road where, you know, somebody. Does something or changes something and how we kind of lost track of it because people come and go. As you know, and if we don't have a good process in place. So. Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm good with giving my, you know, giving more time to do our due diligence. So I'm fine with the continuization, but I'm also very hesitant to move forward on this as well.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one more question? I, I might have missed it. Diane, when did you say that the survey and study is going to be done? Is that something that's going to go on for a while or?
Well, we're commissioning it. We'll be commission, commissioning it shortly. I don't know what the schedule is at this point. They haven't started it yet. So, yeah.
Diane, the one thing that strikes me is this, with this issue. Is to some degree, sort of unusual for me to say this, because I always talk about precedent setting and so forth. But I mean, it's sort of, in some ways, shame on the town for not picking up some of these issues. Over the years and people just saying, well, I've had this shed there for fifty years.
Right.
And I would just like, remind us that we had this similar situation. A similar situation. It's not the exact same situation on a, on a very narrow street in Bristol. And where people were using town property and are using it. And to take away all of that in the parking situation, everyone felt that it was deemed better to just leave it as it was. And not allow any more. You know, occur boxes and things like that. So I mean, because it was such a mess. And I think that you, I'm just saying that you may find. In this study that is such a mess that you, you know, in order to be fair to people, you have to like grandfather those people in. To some degree with the smallest amount of land. I'm not saying I'm an advocate for it. I'm just saying. And, and then move forward with a policy. So I just think that that should be kept in mind because that's what we ended up having to do with this other, with this street.
That's a good point. And I think that, you know, we can certainly look into something. I'm also. As I'm listening to this, I'm also thinking of, you know, some way to maybe, you know, in, in, in England, I think they make, you know, they walk the paths every year to, just to keep them. Open. So everybody knows where the path is. And I'm thinking, you know, something similar, maybe with the conservation commission to, you know, maybe we. Identify open space parcels and have it, you know, have it. A site visit once a year so we know whether somebody's starting to encroach.
I, I guess, I think we've, I think we've covered this. So I, I'd like to move forward. I, I do though think that we do have maps. And we, we clearly take the time. We, how do I know? Because we charge people taxes for what they own and what they don't. We don't charge for what they don't own. So I don't know if I go down that road, but I think we've covered it for tonight. We're certainly going to continue this, or it sounds like. And at our meeting in January, we can have greater discussion. It may end up being a non-issue or a smaller issue. And this council can make its call at that point in time. So we got a motion in a second to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C two. And this is ordinance twenty twenty one, twenty one, chapter sixteen for motor vehicles and traffic. And this is for restricted parking on school days. This is first reading and this is continued from November tenth.
Not afraid to say thank you again, Troop Six. Nice job.
Good job.
What's this council's pleasure?
Motion approved, first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, next item on the agenda is C three. This is ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty three, also for chapter sixteen, motor vehicles and traffic. And this is for one-way streets designated. And parking restrictions established and parking prohibited at all times. This is first reading.
Motion to approve first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve first reading. Is there any discussion? I, I'm glad that you were going to do it because I was also going to do it.
Yes, just for point of clarification, when you're saying no parking on the east side. Does this mean that it's being changed, the previous parking position or lane to the opposite side of the road?
Which road are you speaking?
Both, actually, Rock and Chaws.
Yeah, so. The conditions and where people parking and where they have been parking for many years, we're just trying to match the conditions on the street. we're just trying to match the conditions on the street. So at some point in time, our ordinances indicated that they were supposed to be parked on one side. And over the years, for whatever reason, that, you know, people just decide to park on the opposite side. So we just want to make sure that our ordinances are matching the conditions out there. And that, you know, again, if a, a police car were to go down there, you know, technically, they'd be ticketed right now. So we just want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I, I certainly understand, because where I live, there was a situation, the signs have been removed fairly recent. But I was the, since nineteen eighty-five, and about years ago, the sign says no parking inside, park on the other side, which was wrong side. But anyway, your point, if the police was to enforce the signage, everybody would have been ticketed.
And no tickets, no tickets for you?
Nobody got them.
So this was first reading, we had a motion and seconds, or any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C four. This is ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-two, and this is for chapter twenty-four. And this is in regard to the renewal of the plastic bag ordinance. This is second reading for adoption.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption?
Second.
There's a motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves, or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Want to oppose?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would just like to, just to say that I wish that we would take up some of the other plastic bags, like the dog, dog bags that are strewn everywhere. I mean, there's a lot of plastic still out there that is making a big mess, maybe a worse mess than, than these bags. So that's my view.
Thank you.
Sorry, my bad. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is going to be D three. And this is Vanderhoof Inc., doing business as Roberto's, four fifty Hope Street. And this is a request for the transfer of the Class BB intoxicating beverage license to Richard Corenti, also doing business as Roberto's, Roberto's, and this is for new ownership. And this is called for public hearing on December twenty-second.
Make, make a motion that we move it to, to a public hearing on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yeah.
The second.
Yeah.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to call for public hearing in twenty seconds, or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item is D four. And this is Cup Defenders One Day Dancing Entertainment License for December eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one, for a children's fundraiser from nine P M. to one A M.
I make a motion there, based on all the recommendations we have proven. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approves, or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F one. And this is Courtney and Oliver Poison for J B's L L C, five eighty-eight Wood Street. This is a request for one day, I mean, for one additional Class BB liquor license. I did receive an email from Courtney, the petitioner, requesting to withdraw her application at this time, until she can apply for the approval from the zoning board.
Diane Williamson, would you take a moment to share with the council and the public why? We actually, we reached out to the applicant and, and said that we wouldn't able, we weren't able to have discussion this evening. Could you kind of elaborate on that?
Sure. So this property, the petitioner's application, the property is in a limited business zoning district. There are, in the use table, permitted uses, the proposed use as a restaurant with a liquor license, or a bar with a liquor license, is a use that requires a special use permit from the zoning board. And the prior use as a private social club without liquor license, that's a different category of use. So this proposal would, this use would go to the zoning board for a special use permit.
Thank you. So, Mike, the, the appropriate motion receiving file at this point, you tell me?
So moved. Sure. Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and files, or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I one. And this is public notice from the Coastal Resource Management Council in regards to Andrew Dixon and Sarah Casellis, four eighty-four Papa Squash Road, and this requires response before December tenth.
We had a response from the harbor master, having no objections to it. And this is a receiving file, am I correct with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Based on the recommendations, make a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I two. This is Economic Development Coordinator, Chris Vitale, in regards to Wally School Community Resources and Senior Center Presentation.
We frozen in time on the internet right now?
We are not. So this is our televisions here, but online, where you're streaming, we have been.
Gotcha.
So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to attempt to share from the presentation from my computer, and see if that kicks on our local screens. You know, if not, I'll refer to you and say, you want, just proceed with the presentation. Just a minute, one sec. And we're in business.
Chris, the floor is yours, go ahead. Or Mr. Administrator, maybe I'll start with you, sir, was it, or were you referring right to Chris?
I'll just say, we have a, we're happy to present a, a concept to reuse Wally Schools. We all know there was a study, last study that was commissioned for the downtown buildings was in two thousand and eight. We've been working on consolidating our buildings. And this project would increase the availability of space for the rec department, who are very busy with programming right now for seniors. And Director Shore is here, he'll give you some numbers as, during the presentation. And I have, we have a couple of the other administrators here, Diane can talk about the comp plan, and how this all fits in our town planning. And Julie's here to talk about funding, what the startup costs, what the grant opportunities are, and what the operational costs would be if the council likes to, to, to proceed. So today, what we're looking for was to inform you, we have a, a rough plan, a concept, without, without expending too many, too much in resources. We do have some information from Bruce Thornton, the architect that looked at the building several years ago. So they gave us some ideas on what modern senior centers are looking like, what facilities and uses are being built. So if we proceed forward, we can come back and give you a more detailed architectural plan. And, and so that's, that's where we're at.
So you have to take just a quick moment and say, this is exactly what the town was envisioning when we would have a presentation like this. We used to have screens that we'd have to put up, and people would have to stand behind each other. This is exactly what nineteen ninety looks like, right? Chris, the floor is yours, sir.
Right. So, you know, I'll start out, and then there's going to be a couple of us who are going to speak this evening. But really excited to share this presentation and the opportunity that we have to revitalize the Wally School and convert it into a visible community resource and a center for senior residents. But before I get into that portion of the presentation, I just want to take a step back for those watching at home, or for those of us, just to give us a refresh on the history of the building. Building built in eighteen ninety-six, obviously, it's here in our downtown district, it's historic. It's on the National Registry for Historic Places. It sits on the northwest corner of the common. So if you're driving downtown Bristol, that's at the intersection of High Street and State Street. Brick building, it's beautiful. The, the plot of land it sits on is actually the town common itself, and that space was deep to the town. It was originally used for classrooms, it was decommissioned nineteen ninety-nine, as the district moved towards regionalization. And really, since that time, since nineteen ninety-nine, the building for the most part has remained unoccupied. So current conditions of the building, as the administrator mentioned, we did enlist Bruce Thornton, and we have enlisted their help over the past several years to continue to evaluate the condition of the building, get an idea of, of costs and, and action items that we, as the town, should take into consideration as we look into the future use of the building. So part of this was looking at the current state of the building, which it, the building doesn't have an HVAC system, it doesn't have a fire suppression system. And with every year that goes by, you know, the hot summers, cold winters, it's taking a toll on this historic building. So there is water infiltration, and there has been some pretty significant settling over the last couple of years. So a couple of the pictures you see here, above some of the windows and the stairwell. And so, you know, as part of the work that we've done with Bruce Thornton recently, you know, we had them give us a figure for the cost to stabilize the building. So regardless of what the future use of this building, you know, would be, you know, we just need to get an idea of, you know, what we need to do to stabilize it and keep it, you know, keep it up for future use for the town. So that number's two million. So again, a, a big chunk of that has to deal with the HVAC system and fire suppression system, and also some site work, masonry, things of that nature. So as the administrator referred to here, primarily speaking, you know, we have looked at this over the years. We've had several studies that have been done, looking at potential reuse options, looking at cost, feasibility for particular initiatives. The town's issued RFPs to see what type of interest we could get in, in terms of how we could utilize this big, uh, space for the benefit of the public. And those RFPs haven't yielded results. And I think when we look at, you know, the conditions we're, we're operating under, it's on the common, it's a building we can't sell, it's an historic building, so we wouldn't, of course, we would want to sell it. And I think all of us here want to see it restored and contributing to the town's operations. The last thing I would say about the site itself is, as part of our zoning updates, we recently zoned that space in a public institutional zoning district. And while it doesn't restrict all, you know, options for what the building could be used for, you know, there are certainly limitations, and rightfully so, because it is property on the town common. So now, you know, where, where are we at now? And the purpose of today's presentation is, you know, the town has a very unique opportunity to fund this project, this revitalization project. And, you know, for a purpose that I think is really worthwhile, you know, converting this into a hub for the town's municipal senior services and complementary activities. You know, I think to date, cost has always been certainly a barrier, because there is a lot that has to go into this. But we have a pathway for funding it, and we're going to talk about that a little later in this presentation. So in, in terms of the use of the building, you know, the need is only going to grow here in the, in the years to come for senior community. So one forward islanders is going to be sixty-five or older by twenty thirty. And if we compare that to where we're at today in Bristol, that'd be a seventeen percent increase in population. And as Tim's going to talk to you shortly, is they're bursting at the seams with programming activities at our community center. Nine hundred and sixty-five seniors are enrolled in programming. So that means they've registered on our town's mind-body platform, our scheduling software, nine hundred and sixty-five residents. And just this year, year-to-date, eight thousand two hundred and eighty-three of the twelve thousand total classes that were booked through our platform were from our senior residents. So obviously, there are seniors that have gone multiple times, but it just goes to show you the amount of foot of traffic going through that building, and really just the demand that we're seeing up there. So, you know, with that, we have a slide here just talking about the programming services. And I'm going to turn over to Tim Marianne to speak a little bit about that.
Great, thank you. Good evening. As Chris was saying, you, you may have seen on there that since January first of this year, we've seen over twelve thousand check-ins of residents mainly, and some, some non-residents, fifty-five and older. Eight thousand of those twelve thousand actually were the, were those senior residents. And that's since January first, where we weren't having programs running because of this pandemic. And we were operating as a, a vaccine clinic for the first three to four months of this year. We can pull numbers from pre-pandemic years to paint that picture. For those that may want that information, we didn't have that with us this evening, but we can get that. Drilling down a little bit deeper with those numbers is, we offer over thirty fitness classes a week at the Quinta Gama Community Center. And we run them in the morning, and we have them in the evening, and we have some adult programs that operate later, later at night. Of those thirty fitness classes, a majority of them specifically in the morning that are attended by seniors, we are at capacity. We have, there's a want there to attend some of these classes that we offer. The Quinta Gama Community Center is great for what we do. But as we've continued to grow from the work that Walter, Sarah, and everybody else in town that has supported them have started, we've gotten to the point where we have to kind of, not necessarily, we try to add classes so that we're not turning people away. But it gets to the point where we're getting later in the day where we're losing the, the capacity, I'm sorry, the interest of people to attend certain classes at that time of day. So having gone through Wally School and the potential that that location has, gives us, I mean, it opens up a lot to what we can do for the, the senior residents here in town. And it's not just that, it's that location, as Chris was saying, being a hub here in Bristol, is, we don't have the youth that can get from the common to, or downtown Bristol, that usually spend, they could be out there at night like tonight. We're not able to get them all down to the Quinta Gama Community Center. So if we were able to extend a, a senior and resource center to Wally School, there's a lot more that we can do for all ages. This wouldn't just be senior-based, there's great space there. Getting back to the, the, the act of older adults is, many of you have seen the pickleball players that are over at the town common. And I mean, there's, now they've grown to hundreds of them, they're there every single day. It, it can be, you know, as long as it's not raining, it's slick, they're there. If it's cold, they're there. But unfortunately, if they want to use a restroom, we put a portage on behind Wally School. If this location was available to us, we could offer a little bit more when it comes to them being able to come in, maybe get a cup of coffee, use the restrooms, and take advantage of the, the many things that we would do with that location. Let's see. Yeah, I can have Marianne here talk a little bit more on some of the details of the program.
Well, I think that the numbers really speak for themselves. I think that also the idea of being positioned on the town common and opening services that we provide to residents that have transportation issues and would be more accessible to the town common location, I think is very inviting as well. In addition to the programs that Tim mentioned, we have also been doing a tremendous amount, obviously, recently with the vaccinations, booster clinics, flu vaccinations, the ability to be able to assist again with transportation, or to be in the location where transportation wasn't required, where people might be in walking distance or much closer, to assist them with those types of services. We, on a weekly basis, prior, when we were doing the COVID vaccinations, we were fielding hundreds of phone calls and scheduling for the various four-to-five clinics that we had in town. After that, we've done, for the booster clinics, we've done, or supported, currently four to five booster clinics, which involves registering the seniors over the phone and helping them, those who do not have access to computer access. If we weren't doing those kinds of things, we were also assisting them with getting appointments in the local area. I think just the coordination of services. So not just our rest of parks and recreation, but to open it up to other services, complimentary services that we would be able to coordinate in that area would be very beneficial to the seniors that we work with.
Thank you. There are certainly benefits to this location. You know, enhancing our town offerings in the downtown district where you know, believe it or not, the town common in the area surrounding it is part of a census tract that is historically low to moderate income. And so with that, having the convenience of complimentary services like Ed Cruzey, public welfare, as well as senior services, which according, you know, through the federal government, they they consider that a presumed low to moderate income class group of people. So having that presence within downtown, I think, is incredibly valuable. You know, proximity to our nonprofit partners. So you know, within the downtown district, you know, we have a a great group of organizations to, you know, assist our residents and our senior population. And so, you know, with this potential space, you know, we could do more to coordinate activities and programming services with them. The last thing, and as Marion referenced, is, you know, the complimentary services, you know, through our public welfare office and through our police department. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And I I know Chief Lynch was unable to make it tonight, but Major Burke, did you have anything you wanted to say on that?
Good evening.
Good evening, Billy. As Mr. Vitale stated, Chief Lynch is unable to attend this evening. He's following COVID protocols, awaiting a test. So on his behalf, I have some notes here that he wished for me to relay. So Chief Lynch had the opportunity to tour Wally School. And very quickly, he envisioned a future project involving the Bristol Police Department where officers could be reassigned to the school to promote our community policing and public outreach initiatives. He envisioned a location in the school as a designated area space for the Bristol Police Department for officers and also Chief Lynch to have an opportunity to work with senior services, social services, child services, and other governmental agencies within town. What he saw very quickly is Wally School isn't is an ideal location. It's in really close proximity to other public buildings in town where other governmental services are there for our our citizens, particularly the seniors. And the chief envisions having an officer speak with members of our senior community on a monthly basis. Those meetings could be held at a at the designated space in the Wally School. There are many initiatives where the Bristol Police Department likes to promote and keep our senior population to inform them of scams such as IRS scams that you hear about, COVID scams, and other related scams that are directed to the seniors. He sees that he would like to take something away from the from the West Bay, Chief Tamborini, who was a long term chief of the Johnson Police Department. Many years ago, he started a program in which Chief Tamborini would, every month, he would have a designated date. He would meet with seniors and Johnsons at Johnson Memorial Park. And he would walk with the seniors and just have dialogue with them and just have a, you know, an informal meeting with them, just talking about different things that are happening. And to this day, that that program is still a great success in Johnston and Chief Lynch envisioned something like that here in Bristol with him interacting with the seniors. It's no secret that this that the elders and youth are near and dear to the Bristol Police Department. The Bristol Police Department has many programs in place that aid in keeping the members of our elder community safe. This includes our lockbox program and our Alzheimer's registration program where anyone with Alzheimer's can register with the Bristol Police Department and their information is put into our CAD system. The chief would also like to have an an opportunity to have monthly hours at the center where anyone from the community can come speak with them one on one in an informal setting. This, this would help because many people feel pressured or they feel intimidated if they have to come to the police station. So having a space outside the police station, essentially the annex, right in the downtown area, would open the doors to have some people who would, again, not want to come to the police station because of barriers would allow them to come in and have great dialogue with the chief in a very comfortable atmosphere. When the chief toured the facility, one thing he did notice that stood out to him were the truck boards were still in many of the rooms from the old classrooms. He has a vision of taking those truck boards, repurposing them, and possibly having a kiosk out front in the in our community policing office with a lot of our itinerary displayed on the truck boards or having some events that the police department will be hosting up on the truck board as a way for the people to come in and see what's happening with the Bristol Police Department. The Bristol Police Department envisions expanding our role with the parks and recreation department, working in concert with other programs with the town common. Again, that building is ideally located in the town common. And it will allow the police department to have an opportunity to be directly involved in many events that would be happening in that location. The ideas and concept that the chief has for this office, you think it's it's clear that it's another step towards the Bristol Police Department. Once again, unifying and coming closer to our elderly community and a way of breaking down those barriers that may, again, inhibit somebody from going to the police station. It's pretty ironic that on the front of the building, as Mr. Vitale mentioned earlier in his presentation, that the building was erected in 1869. It's very ironic that that's the same year that the police department was formed. So it's, you know, it's it's very suitable that that would be a great spot for the police department to have in it. So that's just some of the notes I like to pass along that Chief Lynch have.
Mr. Chairman, if I might speak, please.
Of course.
Good evening.
I know who's talking to me.
I'm going to speak anyway. So
Do I have a choice, Ed?
No, you don't, sir.
Meeting is yours.
I respectfully submit. In my opinion, relocating human and social services to the Wally Building would benefit my clients in in several ways. This this year, this holiday season, as in in years past, and not just in the holiday season, my department services between 100 and 120 families. I'd say the majority, probably 85 ish percent come from this area, the area between Bayview and Woodlong to the north and south, and then from Medacom to High Street, East and West. Many of my clients do not have their own transportation. So getting to me from this area is sometimes a hassle. My office is in the Quinta Gamble building. Getting to me is sometimes a hassle. They need to contact family or friends or they have to walk or or find some other way to get there. Moving the department to this building, to the Wally Building, would alleviate some of that stress. I think moving the office to this area dovetails with the work that the food pantry is doing. Food pantry is located on Wood Street. St. Elizabeth's Food Pantry is located on Wood Street. St. Mary's located on on Wood Street. We'd all be in the same area. Again, minimizing the the hassle of getting around to you know, to to my building and then to the other buildings. And if they need help with filling out applications, SNAP applications, lieheep applications. And sometimes they just want to come in and talk. I also believe that moving the department's operation to this building in concert with the Recreation Department and PD tightens the communication between us. There's already communication between us. Marian and I speak on senior issues. I've been in contact with PD on the lockspot, lockbox issues, the dialer issues. Now we're all in the same building and it's nothing for me to go to your office and knock on the door or to your office and knock on the door and say, hey, we need to talk about something. So I I just wanted to voice my my support for this, for this collaboration and and the interest in the building. Thank you.
May I have the meeting back? Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Thanks, Major. Just a couple more slides here. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. As we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this aligns with our comprehensive plan, multiple components, keeping civic and cultural uses in the downtown, incorporating neighborhood recreation into the use of our school sites, helping seniors age in place, and then more building specific action items in the cop plan, including the move forward with the renovations to Wally School to facilitate reuse. And Diane's here as well, if there's additional questions you have with regards to the cop plan. Now turning to project funding, as I said in the beginning of the presentation, the building stabilization is 2 million. The build out and the other work that would be needed would be an additional 1.8. So the total project we're looking at based on our preliminary estimates from Bruce Thornton would be 3.8 million. Here on the side, you see the list of funding sources. A lot of it is grant funding, which we can allocate, you know, through the ARP funds should the council decide to move ahead with this project, CDBG funds, which were in the process of reallocating. And I think we're very close to getting that signed reallocation contract. And I think the biggest chunk here is bonding, which Julie, I don't know if you want to mention that process at all or.
Go ahead, Julie.
Just if you have questions, I mean, you've seen these these items before. We have we have multiple funding sources to try and accomplish this project should the council want to move forward. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
Just last, in terms of next steps, certainly feedback and I think the next steps for this project should move forward is moving ahead with this concept and the work that Bruce Thornton's done to date. I think a lot of it still would need to be hashed out in the design development process where we're talking about, you know, pipe work and suppression systems. So I think even the work we've done to date, you know, we have had Bruce Thornton do the work to say, yes, this is feasible. But I think as we get into that phase, you know, we can say exactly how the building is going to get laid out, you know, that we would ultimately put it out to bid. You know, at the December 22nd meeting, bond resolution be before you that we would work to fund this project through some bonding. And then as this would be a capital project, the ultimately, you know, we would convene the capital project commission. But you know, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Outstanding. Thank you. Excellent presentation. This was, there's a lot of a lot of information and it was well thought out. Couple of things that stuck with me and actually Julie, I do have a question on it. Bonding, we've done some recent refinancing because interest rates are historically low and our our town bond rating is also outstanding. Could you speak to us on on what this may affect? The 1.8 million borrowing, when would it take place? So for example, I know we can kind of defer interest or excuse me, pay interest and defer principal for it. So.
Right. So we have multiple projects that are that are in the queue, which we'll be presenting at the December 22nd council meeting to proceed. Regardless of whether we move forward with this project, you'll see a a borrowing resolution presented to you at the next council meeting. We're trying to to move forward fairly quickly so that we can take advantage of the low interest rate environment that we're in right now. The debt service rough estimates right now on the 1.8 million would be approximately 120,000 a year. So just to give you an idea of the impact.
Thank you. Something else, and actually I want to open up to my colleagues. The, what I've heard a couple of times through the presentation was, regardless of what we do as the next step, this building needs $2 million or it's going to I don't know when it's going to happen. I don't think anybody does, but it is our building. We can never sell it. It's on the town common. It's our responsibility. We must do something. So the question is, what do we do with the last 1.8 million dollars? We have to do $2 million worth of work to fix this building. The question is, what do we do with the last part of it? Meaning, is this the appropriate step for this building?
One of the reasons why we did feel like it was an appropriate time is because we have the unique opportunity right now with the ARPA funds for HVAC and IT infrastructure projects, especially serving a low to moderate income presumed lower to moderate income population, as well as the opportunity to take advantage of the CDBG funds for the elevator.
So like, open up, please.
Mary? I have tons of questions. I I won't bore you with all of them because we here only. But I have to, I have to say 100% agree with the stabilization of the building, the 2 million. You know, we've tried to find various uses for this. But I have to be honest with you, I was so surprised when I read this packet to see a senior center here. And it is probably one of the last places I would think for a senior center because the access is not great. You know, it's multiple floors, you're going to, you know, elevators and so forth, a very busy area that is limited parking. I mean, it seems to me that the problems that we have at the current senior center, i.e. Benjamin Church Senior Center, is the way the space is divided, much smaller, of course, of course, than this, and the limited parking in that area. And what people love about going over to Quinta Gamble is that it's easy access, it's not a lot of stairs, it's easy parking. So when I, when we, when we've talked in the past, I feel like I I missed like a whole, I don't know what, but because when we've talked in the past, we've talked about building in addition potentially to Quinta Gamble. And so that for senior services. And we've also talked about, I've heard the administrator talk about in the past, like if we, if the town hall moves to one of the school buildings, that this building would be a potentially good use for senior center because it's easy access in and out, there's parking across the street and so forth. So I'm I'm very surprised to see this location, like a two, a three story building. You know, I hope there's going to be multiple elevators, you know, we want to make sure that handicapped people can actually get up to the door and easily get in. And so that surprises me, I have to say. I want to say the aging in place is like a great buzzword. I love aging in place concepts. I think it's a lot more than just having these services in a particular location. It's a lot more in helping people and how they can age in place in their own home, I believe. And I like to see more of that go on in Bristol. I think there's a lot of unknowns here. Like, I think I think I feel like we're being asked to spend a lot of money, not the 2 million. Okay, the the 2 million is yes. So let's say 1.8 million on a concept that we have no idea what it's going to look like, what it's going to be like. How are you going to structure it when kids are going in and out of Mount Carmel School, for example, and there's almost no place to park around there? Is the parking going to be reserved for this location on the common? You know, the staffing, what is the staffing going to be? It's a question that always comes up in terms of when we went from a small community center to Quinta Gamble, as an example, what is that going to cost us more in that regard? And is this, I guess it comes down to complimentary services. It's all great. That can take place pretty much anywhere. I mean, I certainly agree with Ed Cruzey that he should be wherever the town hall is. It can be this way. Should he be out like at Quinta Gamble or somewhere else? No, he should be in the town hall, accessible to everybody else, his that department. I just am, I'm sort of surprised by that. And I love people to like, so have you coordinated with Benjamin Church Senior Center? What's going to happen with that? What is, where's the detailed plan? All the complimentary services. It's like, I feel like it's all over the board because it's very specific in here. And then when, as people are talking, they're talking about seniors and kids and children services. I mean, I agree with all that, but you know, what are you looking at? You're looking at, you know, where we, where you come, somebody can come and get, I mean, I do this at work. So like, you know, you know, you do get your application for childcare, get your SNAP application done, you can get help with your your health and healthcare information. I mean, is that, and and you'll do those those forms with them. I mean, are we looking to do daycare? Like, when? I mean, is that, and you'll do those, those forms with them. I mean, are we looking to do daycare? Like, when you say children's services and community policing and all of this? I mean, we had a discussion at this council not long ago on pickleball. I don't know if it was at the council, if it was in a discussion with people individually that I may have had it with. And the, the need to not make, to make sure that pickleball doesn't take over the town common courts because tennis is going to be, you know, an emerging big issue. And now all of a sudden it's like, hey, pickleball, we got to have, we got to have this whole building around the pickleball, yet we haven't committed, that I can see to, you know, making sure that that, if we had to expand those courts as an example. So I, I feel like this plan is like this request for money for this plan. I don't feel there is a plan. It's a concept. I think you're right, Chris, when you say it's a concept. It's a concept. It's an idea. And outside of the 2 million to get going on the stabilization of the building, regardless of what you do, we need to do that. Obviously, it makes sense to know where you're going, what you're going to build because as you're going through to stabilize the building, going to put new water pipes in or, you know, if walls are going to be reconfigured, you know, if you're going to do food service in there, if you're going to, like, what are you going to do? What are you going to be using? Are you going to use the kitchen facilities? If there was a kitchen, then I never went to Wally School, but is it going to be using that stuff? I mean, what are you going to be doing in more detail?
Yeah. So I can answer some of that. And I guess just to mention your point about the programming is there was definitely a lot to digest on that front, but I think it's because of the excitement of our departments and the opportunity that they see. So you know, certainly the, the, the bones of the building and structurally what needs to be done there and how it's going to be configured is one piece of it. And then I think, you know, I have to yield sort of that conversation to each of the departments on the programming piece of it. But you know, when you look at the Wally School, yes, it is multiple fours. You know, currently it, it's gutted in there for the most part. Each four is four classrooms, four on the first floor, the second floor, and then there's a basement space. The building is about 6,000 square feet per four. Now, as part of the design work, you know, we do have a four plan rendering, you know, that we certainly can share and it's a working document. And I say a working document because again, I think you really get into the meat and potatoes of the design when you get to design development. So you know, part of that next step would be to engage Bruce Thornton in those additional conversations and bring in more stakeholders. But to get an idea of, you know, at least for the rough estimates, the purposes of this presentation, you know, we need to establish a baseline in terms of configuration. And to your point about accessibility, so it is multiple fours. The design of the building, similar to previous design work, like the town hall, for example, would be adding an elevator in there on the backside of the building on State Street. And, and introducing a new foyer space where seniors could easily access from the parking in the back of the building or on the street side, depending on accessibility.
But I think people could be, could end up walking for blocks for parking. That's the thing. I mean, it's not easily accessible if there's a lot of things going on at one time. You could be, you could be parking, you know, three, four blocks away.
So, yeah, and so I.
What about people that can't get, you know, walk in that, that way or if they're handicapped somewhat, you know?
So, and I think, I think programmatically, you know, this is a new facility and certainly I think you just shut the camera back so we're still live. I, I certainly think programmatically, you know, foot traffic and how many people are going to be, you know, in this facility at a given time, the type of programming. I, I think there's certainly more that would get flushed out over time, but I want to emphasize something about the plans. You know, to your point is when you're in the facility, you know, our design has it, you know, open concept rather than having the broken up spaces, having a flow, having the reception right off that elevator area, right where people would be parking. You know, having a reception area, having seating throughout the building. And then you're having Marian accessible as well as Ed on that first floor space. You know, certainly we can review that further here this evening. You know, but I, I guess I'll yield it back to you. If there's any better questions.
Please. So those are great points and the architect did consider many of the points that you made. Again, there is a floor plan, but it's a rough floor plan. It hasn't gone out to the different departments and the stakeholders yet, all of them, where we would seek their input. Our design is based on a nearby community, which they just designed a senior center for. They brought up concepts like a nurse's office, which we never thought of, but evidently that is a trend nowadays. But as Chris said, it is an open floor plan. The first floor would be a, a large cafeteria type of atmosphere with a lobby. The second floor was, would be the activities room, a large activities room. The walls and the petitions for the most part would be removed. And that's, that's where you enter a lot of the structural work. As far as the parking, Bruce Thornton is considering the, the soon to be vacated Oliver School in the parking lot across the street. Now, whether that would be exclusive for the senior center, I'm not sure about that, but we would open up parking spaces on that end of the common and State Street with the vacancy of Oliver School and the sale of Oliver School, which is appears to be coming soon. Eminent. Thank you. So parking, we did consider, the architects are considering it, the traffic flow, the architects are considering it. But before we spent additional funding, we wanted to get, you know, an okay from the council to move forward, but we think, we believe by the 22nd, we're going to have a terrific plan for you and the architects will be here to present it. So, and I think many of your questions should be answered then.
Anyone else? Not that, Mary, I know you have others.
I'll have to come back and talk to them separately, but I mean, 3.8 million is a lot of money to just approve without seeing a plan. That's all I'm saying. Like that, in a way, you're asking for us to do that tonight. Am I right? Kind of. Not the, not, you're like, you're not exactly, you're exactly, what you're asking for exactly tonight is to approve the money. Wait a minute, let me go back here. Move forward the concept, approve the bond resolution on the 22nd. So you're not asking for money. You're asking for the money to get an architect to go and finish this project?
We're, 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 we're trying to determine if the council is interested in us pursuing this further. If you say you're not interested, we're going to drop it. If you're interested, we're going to continue to get the plans completed and we'll be back on the 22nd with the completed floor plans and the bond resolution will include senior center. So your vote, your vote to approve the project would be at the next meeting.
So what is the, at the next meeting, would they be discussing like a rough activity schedule? Like if I submitted a grant for after school programs, let's say, I have to give them a general concept of what I'm going to do every day. So when you say it's going to be open space, is it just people to come and sort of have a coffee and hang out? Is it going to be programming? Is it going to be, you know, for this amount of time, there's going to be crafts and this amount of time, there's going to be this or, you know, like exactly what's going to go on? Would that be roughly? I mean, would that be going, coming to us on the 22nd as well?
We can get that through our coordinator of senior activities, but some of the programs are physical in that, that this is one of the reasons why we thought this was a great building for recreation, senior activities. They have a shortage of floor space for, I'll say the program Zumba Gold and it was a yoga class that they, they just, they're running out of floor space and it's very popular. This building overlooking the town common, a large room in the back of the building is perfect and it's ideal for that type of activity. So, so we can, we can provide you, the architect can provide you what our programming is, but we, recreation, I'm sure will be able to put what their typical programs are.
Have you guys linked in with any of the like stakeholders, either the neighbors or Mount Carmel Church, for example, in the school in particular? Which is incredibly busy. At certain times of day, as you know, at the police department, busy. It's a busy area.
Yeah, I did call Father Zino. He's in Italy and I said, no, no decision would be made until the 22nd, but I wanted to give him the heads up that.
Have you talked to the principal at the school?
No. Well, I, I, I got to say, you know, we, we've been talking about these three buildings on the common for quite a few years now. And as they sit vacant. And I, I've said this before and I contest to it, there were five schools, as you know, Mary, you live there, five schools, a very active courthouse with district court and traffic court. And, you know, and I, and I remember as a police officer to dealing with traffic parking issues there. So, but it always seemed to work. So I, I don't, I think this is something we can work through with the freeing up of the parking lot and the consolidation of our, our services and buildings. I, I think it's something that we can work through.
Well, I think it needs to be a conscious effort because when you talk about the schools as an example, you're talking about like eight roughly, like eight to three. Unless it was open house, parent teacher, whatever. So people who live in that area could come home and not, now you're talking about it all these buildings because it's going on right now at like the courthouse and others. You're talking like an eight to 10 or nine to nine, 12 hour day filled with activities. And so I do think you just have to be aware that there are neighborhoods there, but that was not trying to get to that point. I was just surprised to see the senior services in a three story building. That's all. That was, that was what really kind of blew me away.
Well, we did talk to the architects about, about new construction and it would be double or triple the cost. We, we, with the site work, we have the foundation. We have the building. We have the, the majority of the materials are there and the property is there, but to purchase property and build a brand new building, you're going to double or triple what we're, we're, and we're still going to have a vacant Wally School.
And we said, well, no, and I, and I've supported over the years, things that go to go into that building. I, I mean, I know it needs to be done and we can't sell it. I know we have to do something about it. Can't just go to rack and ruin as it has because, you know, we, the government in town didn't make sure that the school department buttoned it up and learned a very hard lesson for the other schools. But I, I just think that I'm just very surprised by it. Let me put it that way. And what is your plan for this particular building? Is, if it moves up there, then what happens? Does it sell this building? I know at one point you talked, this might be a senior center, like if the town hall moves to like Reynolds or one of the other schools.
The problem is, and again, I keep referring back to the, the building, downtown building study. The recommendations were to sell some of the properties that are very costly to maintain. We're still going to have to keep, we can't sell Wally School. It's on the town common. So we still, if you make this a senior center, you still have an additional building up there that's vacant. So
I'd like to open.
I'll be quiet. I'll be quiet, but I just, I just wish there was more details.
No, I'm in support. I mean, obviously the building, I mean, I walk by that building five days a week. And I look at it and even when I sit on Steve's seat, that was the whole idea was to get something, you know, restore the building as much as possible and, and make it as active as possible. So I'm in full support of that piece in going forward. However, you know, as Mary's point, I certainly would like to see more. I mean, many things were, were stated about programming and how they would play out. It would be interesting to see some scheduling to sort of, you know, pitch what would look like, okay, once the building is in, in operation. You know, what does it look like? What's taking place? You know, and how, you know? So that would make me a little more comfortable, you know, proceeding with everything else. But I'm in full support that we need to do something with the building, certainly. And if that's what, and if we can fit these activities there and demonstrate that there is a, that not only a need, but there is, we can accommodate those in there, certainly would, would make me feel a little more fuzzy.
I just, I just have. Just, I have some technical questions more than anything. So once for Julie, does that bonding that we passed for buildings, is that going to stick around kind of in perpetuity or is that something that needs to be spent in a certain time?
Oh, the authorization is, is fine. We, I don't believe there's a time limit on the authorization. And there's not all that much left. If I remember right, it's, I think we have about 1.3 million dollars of authorization left from the voter referendum. We also have our annual local amount that we can borrow every year, 15% of our operating budget.
And then ARPA, ARPA funds. So if ARPA funds didn't go to this particular building right here, where can they be used? Can they go to roads? Can they go to, you know, other uses? I, I know it's the HVAC is kind of the important thing here.
This is another item that will be before you on the 22nd because the ARPA funds and, and their uses and the projects that fall into each category and other funding sources that are coming down the road and grant opportunities that come up, it's sort of these moving targets with all of our projects. So you guys have previously seen a list of projects and what their estimated costs would be. I'll present something similar at the next meeting where, and I'll, I'll provide those projects and sort of the, not to exceed numbers on them because items, at this point, it's not roads, but items such like infrastructure projects such as sewer, Tan Yard Brook, we talked about, other drainage projects, broadband infrastructure, IT infrastructure, HVACs and public buildings. It's those types of projects. There's just other grant opportunities that come up and other funding sources with this infrastructure bill. And so as we're, as we find new opportunities, we should, we can shift dollars around and really try and maximize the, the use of those funds that we have. So it's a unique opportunity for Bristol right now.
Yeah. And one of the other questions I have is, I know that we were earmarking some of the Naomi, the sale of the Naomi property, the Naomi Street property. Is that factored into this at all or is that just taken up?
That's primarily going into Reynolds School renovations.
Oh, it's going to.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess another thing that I wanted to ask about was, I know that we've talked about using this property in other ways in the past. So we've talked about using it as town hall and it looks like there's been some feasibility studies done and everything like that. And I know that the RFPs, Diane, have went out in 2013. But I know that a lot has changed since 2013. And so when you were putting all the RFPs for a building like that, were you thinking a little bit more in terms of, and Tony, you might have some insight on this as well, but were you thinking more in terms of like public private partnerships where like business incubators or, or anything like that, or food incubators or co-sharing spaces? Is that like anything that you had in mind for a space like that?
Well, actually, when we did the RFPs, they were just, you know, to see what was out, out there that, you know, who was interested in it. We did have some, you may recall, we did have some uses that were looking to go into that building, incubator space, type uses and the arcs, the arc uses. And unfortunately, those groups just didn't have the capacity to, to raise the revenue to do the renovations. And as hard as they tried, it was just, you know, even though it was years ago and now it's probably more, more today, but back then they just, they tried to get grant money. They tried to get, you know, you know, leverage funds and they just, they just couldn't do it. So I, I don't, I think that we had anticipated, you know, partnering with other, other groups if they were able to get the revenue, but they were just never, never able to do that.
Yeah. Well, the only reason why I'm asking is that it's, you know, it's been almost 10 years now. I know 2013 doesn't seem like it's been a long time ago, but it's been almost 10 years since 2013, since we did that. And so much of the world has changed since then. And we fundamentally altered the way that we're doing things now. You know, is a spot like that even feasible for something like an incubator, like, like the Hope in Maine, what they're doing and, and Warren and, and everything like that? I don't know. Is that something we even want on the town comment? I don't know. But what I want to know is what's been explored beyond the community center, right? You know, I think it's, it could be a good idea, but you know, are we, do we just select the community resource center and say, hey, look, we think we can get grant money for that. That's going to fix everything up. And now that's what we have here. Or did we, do we look at a variety of different options for this space besides that? That, I guess that's the question that I have.
But could I just say one thing to that? Because if you, the public private partnership idea, I mean, if you know that no one's going to ever raise that money for, to fix the building and that's going to be like 2 million. I mean, a lot of people have looked at it and they couldn't come up with that basic money. Then that's a possibility that you could, the building would be fixed up anyway because the town owns it no matter what. And then you could go back out, I'm not, you know, and, and see if there's something out there. I mean, we have done the business incubator. That's kind of what we've been doing over at Reynolds and at Byfield. And that we've kind of moved away from because of various reasons, but.
Chairman, first I want to thank you for all.
Chairman, um, first I wanna thank you for all your work and the presentation tonight. Well done. What I liked about the presentation is it talked about the protected numbers of seniors and it continue to grow in Bristol. So I like that we're looking forward, um, and the benefit of this location for senior recrea- recreation activity as well as it anchors everybody's sort of downtown, central to the library, central to a lot of other activities as well for the building. Regardless of whether we do nothing with the building, we're in for 2 million dollars to stabilize that building. So i- it has to be. We, we're not gonna be able to let it go very much longer. So I think this provides an added benefit. Um, I think in concept, I'm in support. What I would like to know more, um, Chris, or in the conceptual design of how that flow's gonna work, bus stops to alleviate parking, um, also stakeholder feedback from seniors. You know, reaching out to Benjamin Church seniors, what are they thinking? Do they like it? What, what do they want? And, and maybe you all, you have that information, but I understand we're just talking concept tonight. But more of a broader, broader reach on that. But in concept, I'm in support.
Alright, so I'm less guarded on it than I, I think it's outstanding. I'm, if, I've written very few letters to the Phoenix. And Diane knows where I'm going with this. Is before I was on the council, I wrote a letter probably about 14, 15 years ago. That, uh, that said, what the hell are we doing with our town buildings? And I think this is outstanding. I, we've all, we all agree in 100% agreement, we gotta fix the building. The question is, what do we do with the rest of it? I love, I, I think it was Mary Ann who said it's positioned, uh, I love that term, position on the town comment. I love that. I love its connection to not only town government. I love what, uh, I still wanna call you captain. I'm sorry, major. I apologize. Major Burke talked about the additional interaction with our police department. Head, if I may, if I could continue, because I know you were running me. You, you made some outstanding points again about the, the positioning and its location to the area. But I'm talking about truly the geographical. I love it's on the town comment. I love that people can walk down to it. I, some great concerns have been brought up that do need to be addressed. One of them is, we talked about open floor plan, but this, let me say it this way, trust with verification. I worked for a family that would say that all the time. We trust you. Just need to verify it. That's the council's job, right? So at the end, we trust the, what's being put in front of us. We just need to verify that, that there is good drop off for a bus and pickup. Is there access inside the building? I'm in and out of doctor's offices all day on multi levels. So I, the multiple levels do not scare me at all. Elevators and we have been educated multiple times that seniors are 55 and older. So we need to address accessibility, but we also cannot forget that a senior, I'm 51, you know what that means? In four years, I'm a senior.
Wow. Megan, I never guessed that you were that old.
I.
You're catching up to us.
So I guess my point is, is that, that encompasses so many things. So, so let me just put it all, all back together. I love its location. I love the ideas. I also believe that we need more information. I personally don't need to know the particular programs, not because I don't care and I, I believe it's a great question. It's just that I trust that, that each department will run it. So it, it is serving our community the best possible way it can. Now, will we weigh in here and there? Yes, but I don't need to see all of it. I do need to know that the building is appropriate. That, and it's beautiful. I, I don't know the last time anybody's been in Wally school. It is dilapidated and the, the stairs are falling down and it's still beautiful. How do I know? Go to Reynolds School. Look inside what we have done with the money that, not even close to this. To make that school, it is, it is respectful of the school. Um, Major, you brought up about the chief saying the, um, chalkboards. Well, those chalkboards are going to be respected just as they are, uh, we're talking about at Wally. They're respected at Reynolds right now. We're not forgetting it's a school. We're not forgetting its heritage and its history, just like we do in Bristol. So putting this all back is that I love the presentation. Yes, there are questions that we absolutely need answers on. And we will need that at the next meeting, but I think this is an outstanding idea. I can't imagine. I, I know we have people in the audience who, who have advocated for years and years for senior services. So this is that next step. So I think it's outstanding. I think it's a great use of it. So I would like to know what my colleagues think. I don't typically make motions and I don't want to here. But what's in front of us is to take the next step to move forward with this concept, which means we need questions answered. It means that we would ask to have this 1.8 million dollars added to the bond resolution. Again, we don't make that decision this evening. That would be at our next meeting. And then really important, convene the capital projects commission for that built in oversight that we've asked for and is also part of our charter. So what's this council's thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward. However, we, with additional information to be provided at the next council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Tony seconded by Tim to move forward with, uh, answers to the questions that have been addressed and probably some more when we have the presentation. Discussion?
Yeah. Uh, so I guess one of the questions I have is, so we have the project funding plan that's in front of us. It's $250,000 for the community development block grant for senior accessibility. But let's say that we get to a spot where we decide that it's not necessarily what we wanna do with that building. Is to do what, with whatever this concept is. Then all of a sudden that $250,000, I imagine with this grant is gonna be totally off the table, right? And so it's gonna really alter the, the project funding. So when we talk about concept, are we talking about the project funding that we have right here in front of us?
Yes. Yes. And I also, and I'm familiar with the theory of sunk cost, meaning do we get? An example, you put a new motor in your car, two weeks go by and now your transmission's gone. Do you put a new transmission? Theory of sunk cost says, yes, you do it. It's wrong. Is that at that point in time, when do you give up is the point? So I kinda to your end of things is that I don't believe we just say to heck, we're going and we're doing it. If we lose significant funding, then we would need to make serious decisions and whether that means holding off on doing, for example, multi-phase project like we're doing at Reynolds is, is my thought on it, but obviously this is a council decision.
No, so Mr. Chairman and, and Councilman Lay, I think if anything, we are into stabilization of that building regardless. So we have to do something with that building. So that 2 million dollars, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do right by that building eventually.
But Tim, that's not the question that we're being asked. That's, that's my issue with it. Like if this was, let's contribute or, or commit 2 million to stabilize the building, I wouldn't have any issue with it. I do have an issue. So right now, if, if I have to vote today, I'm abstaining because I don't have enough information to go with this concept of a community resource and senior center and how that's going to work. So I have no problem with the 2 million, you know? But this whole, but this idea is like, I'm not exactly sure. I know Steve had said the, um, that he wanted to, to get a vote from the council to, to move forward. It sounds like just that people, the consensus that most people wanna move forward. Not, there's some questions. I'm not sure why we're voting on this today, but I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if we vote on it, like I'm abstaining because I don't have enough money to, I mean, enough information to say this is the best use of this site and, and for that population. I don't know. Like I'd have to go look around. So the senior centers that I'm thinking of, and I'm not any, an expert on them. Most of the ones that I'm thinking of are like one, you know, they may be multiple level, but they're easy in and out access. They're like relatively new. Like if you think of like some of like Cranston or some of those other places that I'm familiar with. But I don't know all of them in the state of Rhode Island. So, you know, I, that's stuff I, I would have to like look into more for, for me personally. But so that's why I feel like, you know, maybe the question needs to be two different questions, you know, like the 2 million to stabilize the building. Yeah, if we can get that money, we've been talking about it forever. We know we have to do something. We know we can't sell it. We know we have to figure something out. And it's not gonna get used by somebody else investing that 2 million plus whatever else they need to do with that building.
Yeah, and I'm just saying by the timeline of once we get into stabilizing the building, the, to Councilman Lay's question, if we change directions, do we sink and lose money? I don't think so. I think that we're, we're voting on a concept tonight, but by the, by that point in the timeline, we're gonna have a lot of every, almost everything flushed out by that point, I would think. So if we were going to change directions, Marion, go in a different direction, I would think we, we would know that by that point. And we could minimize our risk of losing any money on the building. So that's why I'm kind of like, if you follow, if you follow me.
Just some of it, we've got, let me just break it down one more time. It's a million dollars of, of, uh, lead program funds from American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds, right? $250,000 community development block grant. Chris is not guaranteeing, um, but he gave us the clear suggestion that it was a, a, a pretty good idea that that is going to move forward. I'm trying to be low key about that. 1.8 million dollars, real money borrowed by this, uh, town to fund this. Okay. $750,000 is from potential sale of public property and we've just talked about that already. So there is a whole bunch of money coming from sources that are, uh, not direct Bristol taxpayer dollars. It's all taxpayer dollars. Even when it comes from the federal government, it's all taxpayer dollars because we all pay for it. But as it affects our budget, um, and I also, to Aaron's point, I think to all of our points is that we have questions that need answers. This is not a wholesale, we're going forward to heck. Uh, we need to know more. Mary brought up a couple of points others have. I'm gonna use one of Mary's is that access to the building. Is it appropriate for, um, seniors? Whatever, whatever that, for, for the general public, maybe we'll say it that way, not just senior. Right? Can everybody get in? If you're handicapped, is it, is it an accessible place? That's one of many questions that, but I have no, let me flip it around. I have full confidence that you're not gonna put in front of this council, something that doesn't address those rudimentary basics. So I, I have, I faith it. And if it doesn't go that way, then we don't vote on it. Or we vote on a portion of it. We say, we only wanna move forward with this. Just because we put 1.8 million dollars as a question for us to approve, doesn't mean, of course, that we have to put it on after this dialogue happens. Boy, is there a lot of heavy things on your shoulders at the next meeting, right? You're coming to us with all this. But I'm telling you, I, if I, I'm excited because I want this building not only to be fixed, but I want it to be used. And I love its proximity to what potentially is going to be town hall at one point in time. The school, uh, administration is there and access to downtown, access to the water, access to our restaurants, access to our shops. I think it's outstanding. So it's not the only place it could happen, but we don't have any other choices in my opinion. And I'm talking about of this building, not that we don't have other choices.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I guess one of the questions I have for Julie is because I think there was a little confusion about the question that I asked.
Sure.
Alright, so we're acting today so that we can go to bond, right? And bond 1.8 million dollars on 12 at December 22nd, right? That's, that's what we're doing. What I'm saying is, when we, i- if we decide to go another direction with this and we don't get the $250,000 bond, we're just gonna have to go out and re, go to bond again for that $250,000 to cover the portion of the project that we're, we're not gonna get if we don't go down the senior route, right?
I think that, um, we would be fleshing out all of the project details, have a, um, much more specific total cost. We would be seeking other grant opportunities. You know, I think that, um, we feel very confident about that $250,000. Now, if the use is not for senior services, that's a different story because that, that grant wouldn't apply. Um, the other, uh, thing to keep in mind is that when we, um, go out to bond for these projects, it's, the bond says public buildings. So whether, you know, if we do proceed and borrow 1.8 million dollars for, it's public building money. It's not gonna say senior center money. So, uh, you know, if we don't have exact amounts, you, you know, we have many public buildings that all need a lot of work. So the funds would get used, but that's helpful.
I, I guess what I'm asking is, I mean, the question that we are asking or what we're acting on right now should really be, are we gonna allow Julie or the town to go out and, and do bonding for 1.8 million dollars?
But we don't, we can't answer that.
No, if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, that's not to take place this evening. That will be on the 22nd.
Yes. I think tonight is, is as Steve, uh, said, that we're looking to the council to know whether the council would like us to proceed further with this project. And if that's the case, then we will be talking about, you know, moving forward to borrow funds and talking about more specifics of the floor plan.
So said another way, that question will be specific too. So that will be specific agenda item to vote.
But you see, this is where it gets confusing and I'm not, I'm not confused by this. But the concept is fixing the building to do a community resource and senior center. It's not spending the money to do, to fix the building and stabilize it. Am I right?
Right.
It's, it's going forward with this particular concept without having the details of the plan for this concept. We all know what has to be done for the 2 million stabilizing the building. I think that's what's confusing. And I don't wanna use the word confusing. I don't think it's confusing, but I think it's muddying the waters because you're asking for a vote to go forward on a concept. The concept is this concept, but there's no details to the plan for this. But everybody's in favor of stabilizing the building and most people, I think, sound like they're in favor of the senior center concept. So I would just like to know more details before I say in favor of a senior center concept. So I think that's what's kind of like creating this discussion a little bit.
Which gets us, so we'll do that on the 22nd, right?
Right.
Tony?
Uh, no, I was gonna suggest then, if, should we break it up into two parts and say, okay, we approved definitely the 2 million to restore the building and wait for the 22nd with more details to approve the remainder of the plan. Does that make sense? Was it not confusing?
It's not really necessary because we are not ready for the resolution to borrow anyway. So I think if there's interest from the council to proceed.
We're not actually bonding it up.
It's not authorization to borrow. It's not authorization to spend the money. It's just authorization to, um, get more details from the architect, get a better, you know, get a, a more specific presentation. We just didn't want to move forward at that detail level if we didn't know whether the council was even interested in proceeding with this, this space as a senior center.
I'm not sure why you need to have. Is somebody asking you to show a, a vote from the council? Like I don't understand why you need a vote. I mean, the discussion should had geared, gear you towards this interest. I mean, that's.
I'm sorry. I, I thought I explained, this was just to get this out in the open. This is what we're working on. We want to let you know, this is what we're working on. We're, we are moving quite quickly with it.
Yeah.
You gave us some very good insight on what some of the things you're looking for, for, from us, which we'll put together for the, the next month, which at that point in time, we, we're hoping to get a confident vote to proceed and borrow and do the project. But right now, this was just the first look at it. We weren't going to spend huge, as I stated earlier, huge amount of resources with the architect in, in interviewing everybody at this point, if the council was not interested. Um, but if you're somewhat interested, we're gonna keep working on it and, uh, we will talk to the other stakeholders. We'll answer the questions that came up. Uh, we'll return back here with a better plan and with the architects.
I think that's a better way to proceed than to have a vote tonight. Unless you need a vote, like.
I, I didn't wanna be, we didn't wanna be in the place to spend time and resources on something that was gonna be a dead end, quite frankly. But if, if, if.
So I have a, a, a process question and it's all the way from this. Tim had shared with me that he is not gonna be here at the next meeting. He had shared that with me yesterday, um, because of holiday and he's not gonna be around. Is there any reason why this couldn't happen at our January meeting? Is there some cutoff that happens that, that we lose if we don't do it in December? Is there any reason why we can't do it in Jan? I would prefer to have the full council here is my point.
The bonding, um, the timeline that we're looking for, we were hoping to go out to borrow at the end of February. So that said, if the, if the consensus tonight, sounds like everybody's gonna want to add Wally School onto this borrowing regardless of the use, that's what I'm hearing tonight. If, if you agree, then, then perhaps we could do the borrowing resolution next time so that I can continue to move forward with the bonding process.
And then move this to the.
The presentation.
Cause I really would like to have everyone here. Does anybody have objection to that?
Thank you.
So we had a motion from Tony seconded by Tim to move it to December. So can I, can we amend that motion to move it to January?
I think like if you go with, uh, Tony's suggestion, you could, you could vote right now on the 2 million. To move forward on the bonding for that. You, you wanna bond for more than that though, right?
I don't think.
You don't have to spend it.
The borrowing resolution will include multiple projects, so it doesn't do any good to vote tonight.
And it's not on the agenda to vote. So, yeah. Okay, so we have, we've voiced, we've all voiced agreement for approval, um, excuse me, of improvements on the property stabilization such and so forth. We're all in 100% agreement in that. So putting that on the next agenda, uh, is 100% sense. So. So why don't we take the discussion about the the use of the building, if you will, the senior center and resource center and move that to our January, Madam, quick reminder, January.
Nineteen.
Thank you. January 19th, if we could amend that motion, Tony, are you okay with that?
So I'll move.
Second.
So we had a motion and a second to continue this discussion and have that presentation, which gives you all a little bit more time to our January 19th meeting. But we will have the borrowing resolution on our next. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for your efforts.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I three and Assistant Director of Bristol Parks and Recreation, Tim Shaw, in regard to the Rhode Island EM Recreation Grant for the Town Beach and Sports Complex Entertainment Stage.
Is it just you speaking or is everybody gonna, no? Go ahead, just have.
So um, the Rhode Island developed, the Rhode Island EM Recreation Development Grant applications are due December 17. I'm I'm looking for permission from the town council tonight to pursue one of these $400,000 grants that they're making available to put in a permanent event stage and program stage over at the Town Beach and Sports Complex. So the field that we call the horse field, where you, a lot of people would recall the British Car Show being down there. There's a corner that is down closer to the beach that would keep that full size soccer pitch available for us, but would give us a fantastic location for multiple events there, whether it's the concert series, whether it's our talent show for camp. We could do Zumba classes down there. There's so many uses that we would have. So I'm looking for permission from the town council tonight to pursue these grant funds.
And those great, tell us what you, what's the match on it? What are we?
So it's a $400,000 grant with a 20% match from the town.
Okay, and then what is the proposed? I know that we're in the 20,000 foot stage here and what's actually going to be the stage in order to look like? Do we have general ideas of its cost?
We're somewhere working.
Yes, I I've been working with Tim on this a little bit. And again, Bruce and Thorin, we listed their assistance and they're working on some plans as well as some pricing. So that's part of what we're trying to accomplish with this grant.
So getting that information back in time is is going to be, you know, what would make this a goal. But part of that application process is is providing with this application, be okay from the town council first.
So do you believe it can be done for 480,000?
No, but I think that that would be, you know, it would be a good chunk off of it. You know, this could be the location when we look at the cost of the rental of the stages every year for these for the concerts, I'm sorry, for the Fourth of July Concert Series and also the Last Night Concert. I think the town would realize savings with a permanent stage eventually.
Well, I hate to say this because I really didn't have any problem with this. But, you know, again, and I understand how grants work. So you got this whole thing with potentially maybe a million, you know, half a million, 800,000, a million, $2 million. And you see in the paper and all these people like, oh, I hope it's not going to be permanently down at Roger Williams. I hope it's not going to be here. I hope it's going to be back to, you know, downtown, blah, blah, blah. I mean, I have you talked to any of the people like the Fourth of July Committee or any of the people that to see if they would even because my guess is going to be that they're going to say like, put it in Independence Park. But I.
Actually, there's, it's a great question, Mr. Administrator. Could you?
Sure. So the chairman and I met with the Fourth of July Committee Concert Series Subcommittee recently in the Burnside Building. And we did talk about the importance of keeping the concerts in downtown and ultimately whatever the Fourth of July Committee selects for a location, we could accommodate them, meaning the police department, the fire department. They were present also at this meeting. We could provide the security, whatever it needs, we could make it happen. So the architect firm that is working with Chris Vitale and Tim Shaw, they first took a survey around town and they looked at the different sites for permanent stages. And again, two to three times more expensive in Independence Park because number one, you have the CRM, CDM, Army Corps, State Historic being so close to the water. Very expensive permitting years and years and permitting. The 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 preferred location right now would be that horse field overlooking Narragansett Bay. And again, it would be used regardless by recreation. It may be able to allow long term, a long term continuity of the the Last Night Concert. Once this is built, we spent tens of thousands of dollars every year just for a stage for one night.
Right.
This, my recommendation would be to move the Last Night Concert where there's ample parking. There's a concession stand. There is restrooms. And we could backfill the parking from the horse field to the Town Beach to the overflow gravel lot all the way up to Quinta Gamble if needed. So it's a really ideal location. Security wise, we walked it with the police department and the fire department. Everyone is in agreement. That is the safest location. And so, yes, those conversations have been ongoing. And again, in right now, Independence Park should be the place for the concerts. And this summer, hopefully, if things go well, and you know, that was what the meeting was about. We have them back in Independence Park where they where they belong. But with a $400,000 grant, I don't think the stage is going to cost much more than that. That would be our goal. So it would be there for a long time and I think it would, we'd get a return on our investment.
So what we, if this council believes it wants to, then you're asking for support and going for the grant, not in support of a particular looking stage or its placement. Obviously, we're talking about the horse field, but I'm talking about, is it south facing, north facing, west face, whatever? And it's it's all that still needs to be ironed out. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is permission to go for the grant.
Okay.
Allows us to take a little bite out of the apple on towards that stage. So it's definitely a need for it, you know, I'll definitely make a, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve to allow Tim Shaw to pursue pursue the grant funding towards the Town Beach and Sports Complex Entertainment Stage Rhode Island DM Recreation Grant Application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. The horse, when you refer to the horse field, I'm just making sure, the one right across from the the Town Beach area?
The last one, correct?
Right.
The last field on the left.
Okay.
I didn't want to sound disrespectful about the field, but yeah.
You know, the horse, right. But but with that being said, isn't that state, that state property, don't write on that side of the road?
Yeah, it's in the final stages. Actually, there, the DM's attorney is working on signing over a I shouldn't hate to spill the beans, but uh.
Too late.
Yeah. Permanently turn it over to recreation. We maintain it right now. And so they would do a permanent. We're looking for a permanent use.
Okay.
So that we would be able to construct things and have more control of it.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other discussion?
I just would think that we could just add to Tim's motion, just that we recognize that the 20% match. So it's in there.
Yeah, and I'll modify that with the 20% town match. It would be a pursuit of the fund up to 400,000 with a 20% town match.
Your second, Tony?
I'll second my second outstanding.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
But we look forward to see where it goes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck, Tim.
Just leave a little change for me, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J1. And this is RFP 965 for the operation of the Bristol Golf Course. Bid opening was today at noon. We did receive one bid. The bid was received from Golf Automation, Inc. The bid amount was $11,000 per proposed schedule. The proposed schedule is 5,000 for year one, 11,000 for year two, and 11,000 plus a percentage of profit for year three. They broke it down into tiers. I'm sorry.
What's this council's pleasure?
Refer to the administrative act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to refer to the administrator seconded by Tim's or any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is L1. And this is town solicitor request executive session pursuant to RIGO 42465A to litigation, national opioid litigation.
Mr. Solicitor, does that cover?
That would be the.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tim to go into executive session as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going into executive session. So on the TV part of it, we'll say goodnight. Thank you.